Good evening, it's November 13th, 2017, 7:00 PM. I'm Gary Rakes, President of the Speedway Town Council. I'd like to welcome all those in attendance and those watching at home to the first meeting of the month for the Speedway Town Council. Go ahead and introduce those at the table this evening and go ahead and move forward with our agenda. To my far right is Councilor Eileen Fisher.
Good evening.
My immediate right is Vice President Counsel Jeff Matthews.
Good evening.
To my left is Dave Lindsay, also a counselor.
Good evening.
Jacob Blaisdell is to his left, he's our town manager.
Good evening, Speedway.
Monty Coombs is our clerk treasurer and he's to the left as well.
Good evening.
And Bob Clutter, our town attorney.
Good evening.
So with no further ado, I'd like to encourage everyone to stand and recite the pledge with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First couple of items on the agenda are approval of town council meeting minutes from October 23rd and the second one is a memorandum of an executive session that same date, October 23rd. These have been distributed to the council previous to the meeting. Are there any changes to either one of those? Any comments? We'll go ahead and accept those as distributed. Next item on the agenda is Citizen of the Month for November. Connie, would you come forward and present your Citizen of the Month? Our Citizen of the Month.
Just for those of you that don't know, that the Town of Speedway and the Speedway Chamber of Commerce partner together to present a certificate and a gift certificate to a person that had been nominated from someone in our community. The November Citizen of the Month goes to Ron Fisher and he was nominated to recognize his volunteer work with the Speedway Lions Club for many years, 11 years on the Speedway Redevelopment Commission and for his commitment to Fuller Center and especially the Fuller Center builds in Speedway. So I know that he was responsible for three houses, I believe. So he's been nominated or involved with three houses with Allison Transmission. So on behalf of the chamber and you guys, the town, I'd like to present the certificate to Ron.
Thank you.
And I'd like, can someone stand up and I'll take a picture of you guys? Eileen, you want to stand with it? That's weird.
Perfect.
She said, "Do I have to?"
Stop. Okay, ready? Look at me first and then Gary can get you guys. Okay. Thank you.
Some flags right behind you there, guys. We'll get a little... Thank you.
And I've got the good stuff here. A gift card to White Wine Ball.
Thank you.
Ron, hold on just a second. Thanks Connie for that.
Thanks.
I'll make a real simple comment. I served with you on a Fuller Center for Housing. I do very little, you do a lot. And you've been working with Fuller and previous to that, Habitat, which Fuller was birthed out of Habitat. And that alone is enough for you to be recognized. And I worked beside you, I've seen the things that you do to change people's lives, specifically in three cases I know of, single moms with kids in our system, or kids that were about to be in our system, now in our system, that you've absolutely changed their lives. And there's other people that work beside you. But you go out and you get an Allison Transmission or you go get folks involved in racing to do, to just give their time. And you give it right with them. And then when we get to the end of that process, we hand the keys over to a family and we huddle around them and you're in the background. You don't come forward to be seen and I thank you for that. I know you've done it all over the world, but if you want to make some comments on that alone, I mean, just, some other councils here, I'm sure want to say some other things, but thank you for the work you do.
Thank you. I appreciate this honor and, but I love this town and I'd love to get back to this town. And I just don't want to see anybody hurt. And I think that there's three families on 10th and plus the home at 20th and Allison. Those families are all in a warm place tonight. And so I'm very proud of that, but also it's not because of me, it's because of being directed by the Lord. So I thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
How many homes do you think you've built around the world, around the country? I remember years ago you went to Shreveport during hurricanes. I mean, how many homes do you think you've built? Just guess.
I'd rather say how many children I've helped. It's over 600 children. And that's to know around the world that those kids are in good, decent, affordable homes tonight. That makes you feel that you have a nice spirit. They should go to bed at night knowing they've helped other people and so. And I've enjoyed it. I've been blessed to have an opportunity to come from Hallville and go around the world and sit with the President, with him eight years. But right here in Speedway has been the best. I really enjoyed doing the homes here in Speedway.
This isn't the same as a home, but Ron called me two years ago about garage for the motorcycles for the police department and say, he called me and said, "Dave, I've got an idea. I know the motorcycles, the police department need some storage, they need some place to go. I think I want to do that." And Ron got the group together and cost the town nothing and got that done, thanks to Norm also for giving us some space.
We have a nice garage, thanks for that.
Yes. So I mean, it's more than a house, it's more than just that. You've done a lot for the town, Ron.
Thank you.
Greatly appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you very much.
I just want to remind everybody that the chamber has two more events coming up before the end of the year. November 30th at Delar Indicar is our annual auction and it's open to everybody in the public, as long as you're 21 and over. And that's how we raise our funds to put on community events for free. We really try to do trunk or treat, light the night, everything for free. And then Light the Night on Main, which is our holiday event, kind of kicking off the holidays for the Town of Speedway, is December 7th. And that is from 6:00 to 8:00. And I understand Santa is going to get a ride from Sarah Fisher and Indicar, so you can line the streets and see that. And then we've got a lot of fun activities, choirs, you can make reindeer food, ornaments, see Santa, write letters, get balloons made, and that's all free. So that's December 7th at Delar Indicar Factory.
Is Sarah doing that so that her kids will get good presents from Santa?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, yeah. So anyway, just wanted to remind everybody about those two events. Thank you.
Thanks, Connie. So item five is a public hearing. It's regarding a grant proposal for the wastewater treatment facility. It's actually a public hearing. Maybe just take a moment to introduce what this is and then we'll call the hearing if you want to do that and leave a little bit to discuss during that hearing, if you would, please.
Of course. Yeah, so we are applying for a grant with, through OKRA to make various investments in our wastewater treatment plant. I'll go ahead and, as you said, we need to hold a public hearing technically to apply for the grant. Most people don't have a problem with us applying to get money that they otherwise don't need to spend on the plant, but nevertheless, it's kind of a box we need to check to go through the process. So at a high level, we are going to be installing new grit pumps. We are going to be improving and replacing pumps, motor controls, and the return activated sludge building. Maybe I should have said this first. If you're like at home watching and eating dinner now, maybe just turn the channel for a second. So there's, we're also going to be replacing a fine screen and motor, which is a process at the beginning that filters out garbage, replacing a digester boiler, rehabilitating the north and south primary clarifier tanks. We have a couple of above-ground tanks that have some structural issues that we need to make significant repairs to. And rehabilitating the grit chamber tank as well as a garage that needs work on it. So I think I ticked off the list of everything that's going on. It's a lot of projects, but all of them are needed investments. And if we can attract some grant dollars, as we have in other areas in town, we're looking to do so. So with that, I think it makes sense to go ahead and open up a public comment.
Yeah, so it's 7:15 and I'll call the meeting to order. You know what? It's, I'm looking at a clock on the back wall that says 7:15, but I'm looking at a phone that says 7:09. So we'll use 7:09 because I think the phone is accurate and the clock on the back wall must not be. So with that, I'm calling a public hearing for the CDBG Grant Proposal for Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Good evening. My name's Mike Kleinpeter. I'm with Kleinpeter Consulting Group and I'm the grant administrator for the project. OKRA requires that I read about three or four bullet points, so just bear with me. The purpose for the hearing tonight is to discuss the town's application for grant funding through the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs. We're applying specifically for a wastewater drinking grant in the amount of $500,000. We'll be contributing a local match of $478,000. The first step is for us to submit a proposal, which is due December 1st. After that, Susie Ripley, our community liaison, and other OKRA staff will review it. They'll have a site visit in December. Our application is going to be due February 9th. We want to make sure the citizens of the town are fully informed and have the opportunity to voice any concerns or support for the project. Funds available for the program are limited, it is competitive. If the town is successful with their application, award announcements will be in April of 2018. Jacob gave you a quick overview of the project and things we're going to do, so with that, we can open the public hearing. Thank you.
So those that signed the petition to speak would now have the opportunity to come forward and speak on this topic?
Good evening, Norm Berry. I'm the wastewater superintendent for the Town of Speedway. I think needless to say, I'm definitely in favor of this grant application. Just to mention a couple of things, the reason that we're going after the grant is that we just have, we have so much equipment and infrastructure in the treatment plant that's anywhere from 40 to 60 years old and definitely need attention. If we were successful in obtaining this grant, this means that we won't have to use current funds that are in our sewer operating fund to make these repairs. And that will give us a chance to maybe appropriate some of those dollars in other areas within the town, in particular our infrastructure, which continues to deteriorate, the underground infrastructure, collection systems. In addition to the equipment and infrastructure that has aged over the years, we also have some equipment that's just not efficient anymore, hard to get parts, and just inefficient to operate. So I would like to encourage the public to show their support and to come out the next public hearing and help us hopefully obtain this grant.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other public comments or staff comments? Any council comments on this? Okay. It is 7:13. I'll call the public hearing closed and we can move forward with other discussion on this grant proposal. So we've...
I believe I'll check with Mike, but does this, have we met the requirements and needs for the open hearing?
Yeah, so that's the first step. The next step will be for us to submit our proposal. I gave you a packet here tonight that needed some signatures. And it doesn't have to be today, if you can do those tomorrow and get those packaged to me, then I'll submit our proposal for December 1st. And then next step will be a site visit, probably sometime mid-December. As soon as I know that date, I'll let you guys know and you're welcome to attend if you would like. And that's it. Is there a sign-in sheet going around up there? Can I grab that if you don't mind?
And so this, just to clarify, the grant proposal doesn't require council approval or does it?
Yeah, so council will need to pass a resolution at probably the January council meeting. At this stage, it does not require a resolution, but in January, we will need to pass that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Brett, I think we're good to move on to the next item, which actually still involves Mike. I know that Mike doesn't necessarily have to come forward for this, but the fact that he's here, Jacob, if you want to present this?
Yeah, absolutely. So as we're applying for the grant, of course, these are complicated, there's a lot of work that goes into it and effort. So we would like to enter into a contract for Mike Kleinpeter to do the grant administration work. He is a former employee of OKRA and has had a lot of success and has been very helpful in the process thus far. And we'd like to continue working with him to move this project forward.
Can I have a motion?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we accept the agreement with Mr. Kleinpeter for the consulting.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the agreement with Kleinpeter Consulting Group LLC. Any public comments regarding this? Any council comments? I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the agreement as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This carries 4-0. And moving on to next item, placement of historical marker on Main Street.
Yes, Mr. President. Very early on, when I became town manager, I had somebody approach me asking about putting a state historic marker on Main Street for a facility that I didn't know had ever existed within the Town of Speedway. Way back during World War I, there was an aviation repair depot that was right on Main Street. It is located, and I didn't get cable, the map, I don't know if you can put one up there and we can get it, get it on the screen up there. But north of what's now the B and O Trail that we've already paved, and then north of that, sort of even north of Gilman, was an aviation repair depot. And it, planes had been damaged, they exit the map, planes that had been damaged would come along on the rail line of the B and O Trail. They would go into the repair depot and then they would be fixed and then they would drag the planes up Main Street and then they would take off inside of the Motor Speedway. And really neat piece of history on Main Street, of course, there's plenty of automotive history within the town, but this is kind of a neat, a neat facility that existed. And there's not a whole lot of World War I markers in general. So really neat that we have this in the town, so we look forward to highlighting it. And this is a proposal to place the, place the marker at what now is kind of a bit of a trailhead on the B and O Trail, kind of along Main Street, on the east side of Main Street. And effectively looking, you'd be looking northeast at where the site was as you're looking at the signs. So we'd like to place it there. It's right on the corner of the facility and we just think makes a lot of sense. There's also a proposal, we'll probably put some benches and bike racks and that sort of thing along Main Street as it's along the trail. But really neat location and right across the street from where we plan on putting the Speedway War Memorial in front of the IPL Building. So it's a really neat project. Like I said, I got to learn a little bit of history. Thankful for Rolls Royce is going to be donating all the costs to put this sign in and then the town will be donating our talent and labor to get it installed. We don't have a plan yet on when it would be dedicated. They want, I guess the anniversary would be in April. That's a little bit quick. I've also proposed maybe we could do it sometime during the Red Bull Air Race, tying in the aviation history with the Motor Speedway. But that is, the date is to be determined, but after we find the location, they'll send all the information to the state and then we'll be, we'll be set to go.
Great. So we need a motion and then we can talk about it.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the placement of the Indiana Historical State Marker on Main Street.
Second. We have a motion to place the historical marker. Any comments from the council, questions? My comment would be that I love it. History's something that we've done, I was going to say more better, I don't think it's proper English. We've done increasingly better over the years. That whole area's a historical district, received national attention, recognition for that. The War Memorial, it all ties together and I think it's great. And the placards that we have down to the north or up to the north, the original Allison Engine location, and then on the other trail where we recognized, A.J. Watson is another terrific marker, and then there's one near the Indianapolis Motor Speedway as well. I believe there is, near the roundabout. They're just, these, it's art and it's the best kind of art, it's historical from my perspective. So I'm all for this and excited about it. No other comments, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the historical marker to be placed on Main Street, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 4-0.
I was just going to say exactly what you were, I was just going to say exactly what you were going to say, so. Word for word.
Uncanny.
Yeah.
Amazing.
We're flying right along now.
Oh, boy.
Don't encourage that, if I'm not saying. So the report from our town manager, our town supervisors is next. We'll start with Tim Gropp, Economic Development.
Good evening, Town Council. It was a very hectic, crazy week last week for the Redevelopment Commission. If you have not heard yet, we did officially close after around two years on the Willshaw Project. So we want to make it very clear that that lot at 16th and Main, 15th and Main is no longer open to the public. It is closed off with barricades right now. They'll actually be mobilizing here. They brought out equipment today. So they'll be, you'll see some construction going, they're starting to survey and do some different things there. So that lot is under construction, which obviously changes everything about Main Street's parking. So we are working with the Main Street business owners. We are handling issues as they come up. It's obviously going to be a learning curve, we're going to have to see what issues arise. We do have a plan in place. We have secured parking on several lots. I'll get to that in just a second. For employee parking, to get the employees dedicated spots a little bit away, a block or two away from their businesses, in order to open up the Main Street parking and the side parking for patrons, to make sure that those spaces are turning over and that we're able to park as many patrons as possible. It's about the people coming to our Main Street businesses having a place to park, a convenient place to park, so they'll come back. So we're doing our best to do that. It's not perfect at this moment, but we are working through there. Up on the graphic there, this is the most up-to-date parking map. We have pushed this out via the Town of Speedway app. If you don't have it, download it. So this will be updated. This will also go out to business owners to be able to distribute to their patrons. And we also push it on social media, it'll be on our websites as much as we can. We encourage anybody to get this map out. There are approximately, and these aren't perfect numbers, there's approximately two, when we say parking map, this is the 1300 block north to 16th Street. That is the area that's really going to be affected the most. There's obviously another part of Main Street, but we want to make sure we get this message out that there are, there's approximately 240 public spots in this area. We've secured about 65 permit spots that we've been handing out. There's a few of the smaller businesses that have requested permits, we'll be getting those out this week as well, keeping track of that. So we encourage the businesses to have their employees park in those permitted lots. We will continue to adjust things as needed. If you have not been on, down on Main Street today, the building at 1346, the gas station, has been torn down. It's in a big pile there right now, it's not gone, but in the next couple of days, it will be, well, there you go, we provided a picture of it going down today, so. We will finish that up in the next few days. They will be pulling out, there's a lift tank in there that needs to come out and then we'll be backfilling that. At the same time, we also closed on 1330 Main, the former Linder Ignition Building, including the building behind that one as well. So that is officially done now. We are, that is one of our permit parking lots. They will be coming out, Globe Paving will be coming out, they won the contract, the SRC has awarded that bid. They will be grading out that lot, starting, I believe, tomorrow, sometime this week. And then hopefully paving in the next week, week and a half, getting that lot ready. As soon as they're done with that, this 1346 lot should be ready to pave and they'll get that done. The 1346 lot will be patron parking, it'll add about, it'll have about 14 spots in it. They have started construction on the lot behind Barbecue and Bourbon. They have to go back and change a few things, but that'll be 12 to 14 spots when it's all done as well. And then we are starting the process on the demolition of 1426, which is the former Family Physicians building. We have to get the utilities disconnected yet and then there's some panels that need to be removed on the front before demolition can happen. So all that is in process. We're clearing out the 1426 building now that we have a spot to put everything. We're hoping that building will be the end of the month here. By the time that gets down, that'll add another 12 to 14 spots in that block as well. So we're making progress. We know it's going to be a challenge here, but we're working towards trying to make it as convenient as possible. Be happy to answer any questions the council might have on this transition time.
Tim, do you have a plan if the asphalt's not down and before the shops close?
Yeah, we're right on the edge. Typically, depending on how the weather goes, Thanksgiving's kind of your rule of thumb. So if we miss it, it'll just have to be gravel until the springtime when the plants open back up. We're trying desperately to get as much of it. We might miss it on 1426. I think we're going to be okay on both 1330 and 1346 to get the asphalt down. And also, I believe, if we can get everything moving, that the Barbecue and Bourbon lot should be okay too. So hopefully, the only one that would maybe come close to that is 1426 and that'd just be gravel until the springtime. As soon as it opened up, we'd get that paved as well. But hopefully, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Will you mark that gravel so that you don't lose any spots and things?
We'll do our best. Obviously, if you have to plow it a lot, that'll, with gravel, that'll mess it up a little bit. But Wendell's crew and Rob's crew have been great helping us out through all this. I should also note, we've added some additional signage down there. However, there's probably going to be some additional signage tweaking it to get it right to make sure people understand that there's available parking in certain spots. So for instance, 1346, when we get that lot done, we want to make sure, again, it's turnover patron parking, so we'll work with, to make sure we have that sign correct so that we can, people know they can park there. We've done the same thing with the lot next to USAC that we own, we call it the Wilcox Lot, but parking for Willshaw during the day. That lot is open to the public after 6:00 PM and all weekend. So there's about 20 spots in there, so please utilize it, we like to see it full.
1426, just so that we're clear, the former Family Physicians, that's going to be public parking, correct?
That'll be public parking, right in the center of that block. And that's the block that really needs the extra parking, so that'll be public parking. 1330 will be the permit parking. I'd also just like to recognize Conkle Funeral Home and Ed Carpenter Racing, who has given us parking spots on their lots free of charge to allow businesses to park there via permit in the interim. Ed Carpenter until the end of the year, till we get 1330 open, but both of them stepped up and helped the town out and we appreciate their efforts.
To be clear, those are permit parking only for employees of the businesses?
Yes, those are permit parking only. We do have to control those lots for who's there and the businesses have insured them, but they were willing to give up some spots in order to help accommodate the downtown, the Main Street businesses, so.
Yeah, I would add to that, thank you to folks like Dawson's Bourbon and Barbecue, some of the other businesses there that are working hard to get their employees to park in those dedicated spaces so that it allows their patrons, their customers, to have street parking as closer, closer to what they've had previously.
Yep. And we absolutely encourage anybody to, you know, help us monitor and help us, let us know of issues that we need to address because we want this to work and we know it's a big change. So if we need to reach out to somebody or we need to ask them to have their employee, you know, please have your employees move, we will do that to make this as convenient as possible for Main Street businesses.
Tim, I'd also say thank you to you. I know that you stepped into this situation and the parking committee that Jeff and myself and a couple of members of redevelopment, those same businesses that I mentioned a moment ago, Dawson's and Bourbon and Barbecue, or Barbecue and Bourbon, and another resident, Chris Jones, that lives along 15th Street, just different folks that volunteered for that. A lot of the work, lots of hours of work that were put into that are coming to fruition, knowing that we had some options and you and the commission and others have worked hard to make those options come forward, as well as some other things that are still in the works. So thank you for that.
Yeah, it's definitely been a busy time, so we appreciate everybody working with us and we'll continue to adjust as needed.
Great. Anything else to report?
Progress on Bricksmore. Progress on Bricksmore's going well. You know, TJ Maxx finished up last week, and they're putting walls up for the additional three small box stores. Courtyard by Marriott's going vertical. Get Go should open, I get asked every day when Get Go's officially opening. They're waiting on their final sign to come, come in, so they had some changes to it. It's, it should be here anytime, and as soon as that gets up and situated, there'll be a formal announcement for grand opening. So, we'll definitely make sure we push that out as soon as we find out what that date is, because we know there's been a lot of people asking.
I have a technical question on that.
Mm-hmm.
They haven't opened it, but we've approved everything from permitting, occupancy, all those things, so getting it on the records to make sure that we get revenues over time from that, to be sure that happens this year, so that it's payable in 2019.
Yeah, everything's ready to go. They could open today if they so choose. So, we have signed off. They have their certificate of occupancy, so.
So, their delay's not gonna prevent us from getting those tax revenues in 19?
No.
I just want to be sure of.
No, we'll be fine. And they shouldn't be that long before they open up. As long as they open by December 31st, there's really no worry, but that being said, it's already built in there, so we should be fine.
That's the point. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Police Chief Jim Campbell.
Good evening. First of all, our eighth Citizens Academy graduation is this Wednesday. You know, it's hard to believe that we've had eight of them over the course of the years, but, you know, this is a small group. We had four or five that dropped out, all for good reason, but, you know, it's been, it's been a group that I think by virtue of being smaller, they probably had some advantages to spend more time and do things, you know, with officers that they wouldn't have otherwise. Gary may not want me to mention this, but he also attended, you know, those classes and, and hopefully got some good insight. We have a couple of graduates of that class on the council, and that's a good thing. Student Academy, there were 34 students in October who attended our student academy. You know, and I obviously could talk a long time about what the benefit of that is, that I think helps both the department, the schools, and the community. Mark Jones has done a great job. That's one of the officers I had a hard time coming up with earlier today, that's really 35, but Mark, Mark does work really hard to try to get those students, you know, to associate the police with good things. You know, we've got students at the high school wearing our sweatshirts and, you know, doing a lot of, a lot of activities that, you know, 34 of those kids is pretty impressive. Can't say enough, Ken Hall's, I keep saying, is one of our best supporters, and this again is a true partnership with the police and the schools. Shred It, we had in October. It's a little lower, but we, there was $5,134, you know, that was taken in for Crime Stoppers. You know, this one usually is a little lower, but the part I couldn't understand, the last two or three we've had, it's poured rain the whole time they were out there. This was a really pretty nice day, and it's a lower dollar amount, so I don't know if people stayed home cleaning, or who knows. One of, an interesting note that Norm's probably gonna appreciate, but, you know, the, I read an article, the DEA, you know, have their take-back similar to what we do on that day. And one of the recent ones, they had 456 tons of pharmaceuticals, you know, that were taken as part of that take-back. And again, I think you know where that 456 tons would have gone, you know, did we not have those kinds of programs? And ours continues to be very successful. The last one is, and you'll probably see some bulletins, but, you know, Neighborhood Watch will be on the 30th, and, you know, it's, this one actually has, besides the Speedway officers, this one will have a deputy prosecutor there. You know, they'll talk about safety by design, burglary prevention. You know, I'd encourage anyone that has the time, you know, it'll be at the, at the high school, Road 2950, Flannern Buchanan. And, you know, again, can't say enough for the fact that this is an opportunity to come out and hear from the prosecutor, ask questions, you know, of the police department, and it starts at 7:00 PM. That's what I got.
Chief, thank you.
Thanks.
Next up is Fire Chief Bob Fishburne.
First, wanted to talk a little bit about month of October. We completed all of our fire prevention, getting in the schools, taking the safety trailer. But we also participated this year with Praxair Safety Day, which was a rotation where we did fire extinguisher classes, forums, actually one of the last things, one of the last days that Chief Lynch was here. He and our part-time inspector went over, and Nick works a lot with, you know, our, our corporate partners, and so it was really good for him as a part-time employee who gets in their facility to help with that. So, we were, that, that was really successful. They spent the day over there, putting all their employees through those sorts of things. I know Jacob let you know, we have a new assistant chief. We're gonna swear him in two weeks from tonight. We'll bring him before you and do a swearing in. I'll get with Monty on that. It's Chris Milhorne. He's a 12-year veteran of the fire department, has, has done a lot of different roles, shared some of those with Jacob, and I'll do that here in a couple of weeks. With Chief Lynch is leaving and Christie Williams going to IFD, leaves two openings, so our merit commission had already certified a hiring list as a part of our process. I'm happy to say that Jacob Johnson, who will be starting in the academy in January, passed his state-required mandatory training test today, which our guys put him through over at the tower. Want to thank Wayne Township, they didn't charge us a penny for taking him over there, and Andy Harris and the, the training facility over there, they're just always, always really willing to help us out on those sorts of things. We will be bringing on another probationary firefighter in mid-December. We hope to get him through his physical, his psych, through all perf stuff. We're hoping that he and Jacob can go through the academy together. IFD has, has told us that they would make that available. So, they would start the fire school side of that academy in mid-January. We think that's gonna work, which then gets them on the streets by May, which is kind of a busy time for us. So, and, and that time of year is good for us overtime-wise also, so we're hoping to get them both in the academy at the same time. We'll be back to full strength come May, so. Also, wanted to talk a little bit about Coats for Kids program, that last year was the first year, and actually, it's Mark Jones, the, the officer in the schools, who, you know, he'd see kids coming to school with short-sleeve shirts, and, you know, he was just looking for a way to, to get them that. And so, I know the firefighters and police officers last year would just bring in things for kids, adults. There's junior high and senior high kids that need adult coats. Well, last year, Dave Howard at Praxair, they were looking for a way to give back to the community, so his entire safety team at Praxair is gonna, for the second year, they'll have a two-week period where they can bring in lightly-used coats or brand-new coats. We put up a barrel in our hallway, and Mark, Mark was able to secure a coat rack. Teachers can submit names. It's, it's really a neat program, and I really appreciate Mark asking us to participate last year, and we're gonna do that again this year with the help of Praxair. So, we've got three guys this week in the fire department training network over on the east side, sending them through a truck ops class. It's three gentlemen who didn't get to go last year. We'll send three more in January. That's all, all already been paid for through our training budget, and they're finishing up that this Wednesday, so. Yep, it's kind of a busy time, but looking forward to it. So, any, any questions that you might have, I'm willing to answer.
What's your timeframe on the coats and?
Last year, we did it past Thanksgiving, so if, if the, if the citizens want to participate, and I know sometimes that can, that can be a scary thing, but, you know, we'll, we'll take all the coats we can get, because Mark also has a place at the schools that he can store them in the offseason. So, this year, he was able to start giving coats away immediately when he saw kids coming to school, when we did have some of the cold weather, and especially before Thanksgiving. We'll, we'll take, we'll take whatever the public would want to bring. They can bring them by the police and fire headquarters, and I can touch base with Sherri tomorrow and let her know that the barrel will be at the end of the hall. It's, it's really not a, not a real difficult process, so. Okay? That's a great, great question. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Congratulations on the hire.
All right.
Promotion, excuse me.
And to be clear, just because there were some jokes after the Fire Ops 101, the Jacob he's referring to is a different Jacob, just so we're all on the same page.
Yeah, yeah, it's Jacob Johnson.
Thank you. Really is. Street Department, actually, Department of Public Works Director, Wendell Walters.
Good evening, Council. Just some updates on the activities around town. Hawk Signal Project, everything underground is done. The base is installed. We were late, waiting on delivery of the pole. Supposed to be here the 21st, so 21st, 22nd, we'll get it installed. Talked with Jacob and the police department. We might delay activating that because of the holidays. We need officers and myself and police captain to kind of monitor the area once we turn it on, to make sure things working correctly, traffic's paying attention, people are paying attention. So, we'll let you know when that all comes about. 16th and Lynnhurst Project, we're looking at December 1st for total completion. We do have the concrete back in and the turn lanes. All the underground stuff has been done. They're working on curbs and sidewalks and driveway approaches, so there might be some lane shifts that will happen in the future here, that we can open up a lane. So, depending on the weather, December 1st is our target date. We are about a month behind on that project due to utilities, so whether it stays with us, we should meet the December 1st project date. On the park side, we are in the process of getting quotes for our 100 trees that have went bad on us. Thanks to Jacob's help, we've got the information out. We should be receiving those back Tuesday and Wednesday. Bring that to the town manager's attention for approvals, if we can get all those trees taken care of up there. So, this will be a big push. We've identified 101 trees to be taken down. Mother Nature helped us get one tree down, so we have 100 left on our list. So, once we get this approved and move the crews in there, it'll be a busy area in there. What we're gonna do is give them sections that we'll rope off, block off, so that they have a safe work area, and our residents still can use the park areas. There might be some areas around the playground at times that we'll have to, to rope off, close off, but we'll get it all coordinated and make it all happen.
But what's the rough cost of, of the tree service that we're having to hire out?
In the past, they've run from $700 to $1,500, and that's per tree, and that, that will rate on the size, then a stump removal is average usually $175 to $250 to do that work too. So.
Well, we're in the process of soliciting bids for that work, so maybe we'll just let you know when, when those come in.
Thank you.
All right.
It's a little tricky at times. We get the information out on the street. Thank you, Jacob. And with Tim's reporting stuff, Main Street is gonna be busy the next few weeks with the paving companies, the demo companies. We got trucks moving around constantly, so everybody be careful. Watch what's going on. Don't watch the destruction, just be careful of the traffic, because we do have heavy equipment moving around the workplace. So, be patient, we'll get there. We've been through some major projects, and everybody works well with us, so catches us up.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next up is Mary Armicost from Water Works.
Everything's going just fine at the water plant. We promoted Luke Adams to distribution crew leader. It was a well-deserved promotion. He is a very dedicated, hard-working individual, and it was really, I appreciate you giving us the permission to promote him. We have two individuals that are taking their water, surface water treatment operator class, and hopefully will be passing their exams and getting their licenses in the next couple of months. We finished winterizing all of our wells. We're doing general winter maintenance on the surface water plant, have it all ready to go back, back online by spring, and that's really all we have for the water department. Any questions?
Thanks for your report.
Thank you.
And next up is Norm Berry from Waste Water.
Operational-wise, the plant's operating fine. Don't have any major issues at this time. To give you an update on the leak that I reported at the last meeting, the leak in the, one of the elevated tanks, we are in the process of getting that sealed up this week. We hired a contractor, and they'll be coming in and, and actually injecting epoxy into these cracks. We're not gonna do a external type fix at this time, because we're hoping to maybe do a more extensive repair once we receive the grant.
Positive thinking like that.
I'd like to echo a little bit too about what Jim reported. I want to thank the police department, and this is a very valuable service that they're providing over there. And it's not really a joke about flushing the pharmaceuticals, but there's a lot of science going on right now about pharmaceuticals showing up in our drinking water, our storm water, and when these, when these materials are flushed into the sewer system, the treatment plant can't treat those. So, they'll just pass right on through the treatment process, and they'll end up out in Big Eagle Creek, you know, downstream. So, so there, like I said, there is a lot of science going on right now, looking at what kind of harm maybe these pharmaceuticals are causing, not only to the drinking water, but the environment and wildlife. So, please utilize the service. I've been doing it myself. I've been sticking them in an old shopping bag, and once I got enough of them, I'm gonna bring them over and, and dedicate them to Jim. I really, I really appreciate it. It's very good service, so please utilize it.
Yeah, just, Norm, I'm in the medical business, and I, we had the same, I'm trying to remember what the, the event is called nationwide.
Take Back.
Take Back, thank you. The, the chief explained earlier, and you're commenting on again, it is an enormous amount. The, the tons that you described, it's like several herds of elephants, if you were to actually mass all of that, the amount of weight of drugs just around the country, and people like Walgreens and CVS and some of those are all becoming active and doing the same thing because of the exact reasons that you described. Not to mention the fact they're ending up in the hands of folks that they shouldn't be in, that are actually either selling them or taking them, or both, and we hear every day of multiple overdoses and everything else, so it's a real issue. So, thanks for, for making second comments on that.
Thank you. Lastly, please help out your street department. You know, we still are in the leaf, leaf time, so try to keep those drains in front of your house clear. We've got some rainstorms coming up, and let's try to keep those streets moving. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks, Norm.
Next up is Tammy Smith with Parks and Recreation. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Your second meeting.
Yes, glad to be back.
Just stay, hang around.
I'd like to start off today saying that our Speedway Youth Basketball League is in full swing. Things are going well with that. We have 109 registrants, so that's good, and it seems to be going well, a parent run this year. So, that's all I have on that one. Does anybody have any questions on the basketball program? Okay. Next, I was gonna mention about our tree program. Wendell talked about the 100 trees that are gonna be coming out, and Brian had done a video of me talking about our tree program, that me as a over-23-year citizen of Speedway knew nothing about until I got into this position, and I was real excited about it. And it seems like it's fitting that this time is actually the best time to promote this program with those trees coming out. It's a great way to reforest. I've had great feedback. Today alone, I got four phone calls. Since the video came out, I think Wednesday or Thursday of last week, I've had seven inquiries. I've already sold some. Our planting is basically done for this season. The last two trees that were ordered will be planted this week, then we're waiting on the plaques for them. The next planting season will be in the spring. The next planting season will be in the spring, weather permitting. So, we still encourage people to do that, and just let me know. One thing I want to mention on the trees, these are not saplings. We're getting nicer trees that are two to three years old, so, you know, we have less problems with them.
Tammy, the other thing I was gonna comment on, because you and I had a chance to talk about this the other day, these aren't necessarily going back in the exact spot where these other trees are coming out. We're trying to be smart about where we place them. Obviously, to some degree, there's a healthy part of Meadowwood Park being thinned out.
Right.
Finding other spots for where trees need to go, and maybe even in Leonard Park, or maybe even some other places where they might go. People can request a location. That doesn't necessarily mean they'll get that specific location, though.
Exactly, yeah. And mainly, they can request which park it goes into. But Meadowwood is the one that we're gonna need, you know, more trees in at some point, so it could be, if too many people are asking to plant it in Leonard, we may have to cut that off, but we're not to that point yet. But, anything else on the trees? And then, I'd like to go on record to thank the Police Department as well. Both of my kids participated in that student academy, and I thought it was a wonderful program. I looked forward to them coming home every day. They just really talked it up, and I hope that that's something that's continued. I think it's great for our youth. And that's all I have.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Let's go ahead and move on. Thanks for all those reports, staff. Appreciate all the work you're doing. Let's go ahead and move on to the approval of claims, utility adjustments, and a general report from our Clerk Treasure.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks, Mr. President, no, excuse me, sorry for that. The claims we have for you tonight represent vouchers submitted from October 21st until November the 10th last Friday, and business is normal, I would say again, and would appreciate your approval.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the claims presented by Clerk Treasure.
Second.
Motion to approve the claims. Any comments from the public? Any from the council? All those in favor of approving the claims as proposed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Four zero.
Thank you. The utility adjustments are for you as well, for the same time period, October 21st through November the 10th, and again, would appreciate your approval of those adjustments.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we accept the utility adjustments presented by Monty Combs, our Clerk Treasure.
Second.
Great, thanks for that motion, very specific motion. To approve the utility adjustments, any comments from the audience on that? Any from the council? All those in favor of approving the utility adjustments as presented by the Clerk Treasure, Monty Combs, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Those also carry four zero. Monty, anything else to report, seating?
Just quickly, the State Board of Council is here for our annual visit, their annual visit to us, and they seem to stay most of the year, unfortunately, but they're here for the 2016 audit, and they say they should be done sometime around Christmas, which is encouraging. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next up is our Town Manager. Do you have anything to report this evening?
Thank you, Mr. President, Gary Rakes.
Okay, all right. I can adjourn any time now.
I do want to reiterate a little bit of what Wendell said with the Hawk System. So, that's the system that's gonna go into high school. Of course, the system at Cunningham has been working really well, and I think some warning tickets were issued when that first came out, just helping people understand how it works. High School Road's gonna be a little more challenging. There's obviously faster flow of traffic, it's a wider road, and I think traveling that road is a lot more people from out of town. So, for those that are in town and are aware of what's going on, would appreciate your help and support in following the rules there, of course, and getting the word out as well as people who maybe make less effort to be informed, just see it pop up and are wondering what's going on. So, the more we can get the word out on that light, the better. It's gonna help a lot of kids get to school safely, as well as to the park, and it's gonna be a really nice addition to that road, make it a lot safer. Also want to talk about the ash program. I call it the ash program because it's the ash trees that are having the issue at Meadowwood, but that's been a common question or concern that has been brought to my attention, I'd say quite a bit over the past couple of months. And I think Wendell and his team and Mike Smith have done a really good job of trying to pick out the trees that looked the worst, the most risk of falling down or branches falling down, and we've kind of chipped away at it with limited funds. And I just, I guess, want to also thank council for approving a budget that will add a little more funds to that, and we're gonna try to get it done in one swoop here this year because it's just, as hard as they've worked to stretch dollars and make it work, there's some trees that have been in really bad shape, and it's really accelerated, I think, over the past few years. So, it's unfortunate, but Tammy was downplaying a little bit. She made a very nice video that went out talking about the tree program. So, if you're interested in helping replace those trees, please do reach out to her. It's, how much is it, Tammy?
$250.
$250. You get a little plaque that goes along with it. So, if you're interested, or you don't have to have a plaque, you can just donate a tree, and we'll plant those. So, highly encourage folks that are interested to do so. We've got a lot of trees to replace. Let's see, I think all I have left, all I'll mention it is Saturday, November 25th, a small business day, of which we are fortunate to have several in our community. So, we're to encourage folks to go out after Friday and do a little bit of shopping locally and support our local businesses. Last but not least, I will begrudgingly congratulate Wabash College on winning the Monon Bell game this past weekend. And a lot of people say they just got really lucky with a few Key to Paw errors. You know, that might be true, but they also made some gutsy calls down the line, so...
Who beat them?
Who beat DePau? Who beat DePau? Yeah, the cavemen, Wabash College cavemen. That's what they call us. But no, it was a really good game, 22-21, but congrats to Wabash. That's all I've got.
That really hurt, didn't it?
A little bit. One point.
All right.
Hey, Jacob, real quick, I have a question for you.
Yes.
In regards to the walk for, or the signage for the students across High School Road and even really Cunningham. Obviously, there's, it's put in place for the individuals driving cars and such. What about the students? Because High School Road, I see more so there than Cunningham, where they will dart across the street at any given time because they're supposed to design to go down to 30th Street and cross over to go to the school. But that's a little bit of a distance, I understand that. So, where, you know, is there something that's putting in place with the schools and the kids, making sure that they're crossing at the walk sign?
I'm not sure with the schools. I believe we're gonna be working with the apartment complex because the apartment complex is sitting there, we'll be able to, they've been working with the town on a number of different initiatives, but to get the word out that, hey, this is where you can cross, and it really is the right location for them to cross, that gets you about a straight shot in, whereas I think people are just crossing and darting across wherever because there isn't an alternative right now. So, we'll be working with the apartment complex to get the word out because that is the majority, if not all of the students ought to be crossing. But knowing what I do about the schools and the relationship our Police Department has with them, I feel confident saying that they are probably working together to identify which kids will benefit and make sure that they're also being told in school, hey, this is where you ought to cross safely.
Okay. That's a good question, for sure. Anything else? Great, thanks again for your report. Bob Clutter, anything to report, seating, from the legal position?
Nothing from the legal position, but I do appreciate the new nameplate. Thank you very much for that.
You bet.
Very nice. Feel official now.
Great. Report from council members. Start to my left, David Lindsay.
Are you gonna mention the school board?
Yes.
Okay. Nothing to report, sir?
That's it?
Mr. President, Gary Rakes.
Councilor Eileen Fisher?
If you're gonna mention the school board, I have nothing this evening.
I have several things to mention, so...
Well, okay, then I'll just jump in. I'll just say that we have the list, obviously, of our, all of our commissions and boards. It's coming up, it's that time of the year, so if you're currently serving on a board and interested to be reappointed, please contact your counselor. If you're interested on serving that you're currently not serving on, there's applications out on our website that you can complete, and we'll be reaching out to the different people for that. We obviously cannot do what we do up here without the helps of our board members. So, for all those who've been serving, thank you, and all those who don't know that you're going to serve, thank you. We need your help. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilor Jeffrey Matthews?
I have nothing this evening, Mr. President.
Okay. Just to tag on to what David pointed towards and Eileen mentioned more specifically, Terry Reed, who's been serving our town, schools in our town for 22 years, has decided that he wants to keep serving, but not necessarily on the school board. And he's been recognized as one of the best school board members in the state of Indiana. Literally, they've been awarded that, that recognition. I've heard from other people involved in the schools at administrative level, parent level, at a school board level, that he is dedicated beyond what any member is. So, those are huge shoes to fill, and really important shoes to fill because he's not going to be reappointed because he wants to step away from that position. He'll want to serve in other places in the town. So, with that, as Eileen said, I wanted to be more specific about that position because it's not one that's come up for a while, and it is coming up, in addition to the others. Wanted to tag on to Chief Campbell's Citizens Academy graduation on Wednesday night. I participated in that. I know a couple of the other councilors have participated in the Citizens Academy. It is really informative. It's been a lot of fun. I get to run over some cones one night out in Plainfield. I would rather have run over cones and been accused of being a wimp by the police officers, so I decided to run over cones instead of going, driving slowly. But that's been a lot of fun. I missed the night that we had the opportunity to learn about shooting weapons, so I'm gonna make that up. But do appreciate the work that all of our police officers do, and I know our Fire Department has a similar academy, and I'd look forward to taking that at some point in time when I'm physically able. Like tonight, as Connie mentioned, is 12:07. Look forward to Santa, bringing, or Santa Claus coming on a two-seater with Sarah Fisher. The chamber is 11:30. I'll remind everybody of that one because it's important to raise funds for the chamber that puts on events in our town. Veterans Day was this past weekend, and I want to thank the veterans in our town, in particular, those that I had a chance to see on Friday at the high school. Both our junior high and our high school administrators, teachers, and students put on two tremendous, and I imagine our middle, our grade schools do something as well, I just am not informed of it, they put on two tremendous programs. The one at the junior high, they recognize relatives of the students, so those grandparents, parents, older siblings, aunts and uncles, neighbors. Kids invite their veteran family members or really close friends to come to the junior high, and then they recognize those veterans. It's amazing to see, to be, see that program. I wasn't at that, this year, the junior high, I was instead at the high school in the afternoon on Friday. I can't tell you how proud I was to attend that and see our choir, our band perform the different songs of the various branches of the military. Both, they sung music related to that. Our students stood for the pledge. They sat down, heard a little more information and music, and then all of our students stood for the National Anthem. There wasn't a question about it. As a person who absolutely respects veterans and those who actually paid our ultimate price of losing their life, to me, it was fantastic to see our students do what they were encouraged to do. They weren't required to do it, they were just encouraged to do it, to respect, especially as they were paying tribute to veterans that day. So, I just can't tell you how proud I am of the students and the administrators and the teachers that made that happen. It really moved me, and I was just glad to be a part of that, or just be there and see it, actually. The, want to mention, in addition to the school board appointments, as Eileen said, there's the SRC, the arts, a variety of boards and commissions where we have spots open. And with that, I don't think there's...
With those positions...
You have something else, David?
Please. I should have, I guess I should have spoke. If you are interested in the school board, those positions apply sooner rather than later for us, please. We don't need to wait till the last minute till we have names for that, because I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of interest, or I hope there is.
Yes, there has. There has been interest in the past. We've interviewed candidates, talked to candidates at times. I'm not sure exactly what the process will follow, but it's a really good point, the earlier the better. Any last comments? Anything that we missed? Great. So, I would like to thank, we have two engineering companies that attended tonight's meeting, and one of them got up and actually set the time back on the clock in the back of the room, and the other one supervised. So, I wanted to thank those guys for making that happen for us.
Just make sure, let's make sure that's not on the claims.
Yeah, so we want to be sure we don't get billed for that. But what's funny is it says 8:06 on my phone, but it's 8:05 on the clock, so they were pretty close. But we thank them for their efforts, and at this time, we'll call the meeting adjourned.